Been disseminated?
Oh, yeah. Those are my exceptions. Did you get them? Because I sent them away. No? That's okay. We can talk about it later. Okay. I make a motion to approve the open session minutes from June 19th and August 11th, 2017.
Second.
Any corrections, edits? Okay. Hearing none. Motion is believed in. Seconded. Can we take vote?
All those in favor?
All those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. All right. And, uh, motion to table the executive session minutes from June 19th, 2017.
I make a motion to table the executive session minutes from June 19th, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Onto community comments. Are any members of the public who wish to have? Thank you. Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to superintendent comments.
Okay. Thank you. Three relatively brief things. I've provided in your packet, uh, our agenda for our annual leadership team retreat, which this year was held, uh, once again in July, back on 17th and 18th of July. It's really an opportunity for us as a district leadership, leadership team to kind of reflect upon, uh, the previous year and then really plan, uh, the upcoming school year and what our focus and what our priorities are going to be as a team, but also what we want to message the district. I think we're very cognizant that this is the final year of our existing five-year strategic plan, and we know that after the holidays, we will in earnest, uh, start building a new strategic plan with all of our stakeholders. So we're kind of really using this year as an opportunity to really, um, do the research about what is out there with regard to current research and best practices and thinking about schooling in the modern context. We, as a leadership team, recently enrolled in an online course known as change.school, which is sponsored by a gentleman by the name of Will Richardson, who actually is going to be our keynote speaker, uh, on our PD day on August 29th. And, uh, we're really, really charged up about, um, a lot of the ideas from that course as far as how schools really essentially need to change to, um, create an appropriate context and appropriate outcomes for kids as they, um, go through our system, but also thinking about the outcomes that kids need to be successful in a modern economy. We're kind of dovetailing that with a district-wide read of the work called Most Likely to Succeed: Preparing Our Kids for the Innovation Era. And in a nutshell, if you really think about it, um, it's estimated that today, if you think about it, the class of 2017, um, at least 40% of them will be in types of positions and careers that do not exist today. They'll be in those types of jobs within 10 years. So if you think about our kids at the elementary level and the middle level, that percentage will increase more and more. So really, I, it, it, it's those ideas and what we're planning for professional development, uh, and also looking at our existing initiatives and some of the unfinished business that I'll talk about a little bit later from our 16 and 17 action plans, really are becoming the springboard of our 17, 18 district action plans, which will be shared with the committee, uh, for our next meeting. So all in all, as I say, it was, uh, a great time, as it usually is, for team building and also planning for the coming year. Second piece is just quickly, a school choice update. Per our policy, we kind of do two public announcements. The first one in May and then the second one the week before school starts, should there be any additional openings. Uh, I've checked in with my four principals and right now, um, district-wide, there is only one slot opening, um, and that is at the third grade at Memorial. In every case, in all four cases, um, they did run lotteries, uh, this year for the openings because we did have more requests than we did openings. Just as a note, and we'll, we'll deal with this at the meeting on the 11th, um, we're actually looking at an increase in enrollment. I know my prediction was 30 fewer students. Right now, as of today, um, we're looking at, um, actually about 20 more students, uh, this academic year. And as I say in the background notes, the biggest piece is an increase of NIPAC of about 40 students, uh, based upon increased enrollment in our freshman class.
What's the primary driver of that, Ben?
Uh, many fewer applications to BBT and therefore fewer acceptances and more students in the curriculum here. And then, uh, last but not least, is, uh, I've also included in your packet, the final cherry sheet from the conference committee budget, um, that was approved by, uh, the legislature and then signed into law by the governor, um, for our FY 18 state aid. As I say, it definitely wasn't a banner year. If you follow the, I also gave you one that shows the progression from the governor's budget to, uh, the House, the Senate, and then the final conference committee. We typically budget, we count on, um, conservative numbers because we, because in the timeframe, we always use the governor's budget. We usually do a little better in the House and the Senate budget, and as you can see, um, in the final budget, we picked up a whopping $1,692 from the governor's budget. It was not a banner year. You know, the biggest driver is rather disappointingly, um, only $30 additional per student, which translated to about $64,000 in additional Chapter 70 money. Keep in mind, for FY 17, it was $75 additional per student. And for the most part, regional transportation, as far as we did show an increase, um, but the overall percentage of reimbursement remains flat. So, uh, things continue to be relatively flat. It's not particularly, uh, encouraging, and, um, I think it shows the need for us to continue to find as many efficiencies as possible and, you know, streamline our expenses accordingly. Okay. And those, those, that's my report.
Any questions or discussion? All right. Hearing none, we'll move on to administrators' comments. School year 2017 financial pullout, Jay Meyer.
Hi.
Hi, Jay.
I'm very good tonight, so I, as Joe mentioned, I had a 47-slide presentation I'd like to do tonight, but we're going to pare it down to six, so.
Sounds good. Six sounds better.
So we actually, as of... This afternoon, about 3:00, I have closed, I have my 17 books, so I haven't actually done, actually closed out the software. But, um, we typically have a variety of charges that come in in July, in August, that are charged back to June because they're expenses and services. So wait, and wait, and wait. So, but actually, the notice has changed very slightly. Well, this presentation will be shown by about 8:12 p.m. If you look at that slide there, it's what I have in front of me here. When I put the revenue budget there, that's what we put together when we get our budget back and certify it back in March or April, whenever that was, uh, 2016 for the FY 17 year. The actual revenues, you can see, was about $334,000 in order than we projected. And on the next slide, I kind of detail out, um, specifically, the major drivers there, and as you can see, the biggest one is transportation reimbursement. As always, we use the governor's projection. We throw a bunch together. In the final end, it was up to about $940 from about $840, and then we ended up getting actually extra money back of that that came in late June. So we did fairly well on transportation reimbursement, and that's the challenge that is always very, the end of the year, after you basically spent all your money, you're going to find out which you actually didn't get before. A vision program is something that we typically plan around $75,000 from it, and it gave you closer to $125, um, against that deal, but we always project that conservatively as well, because you never know what's actually going to turn out. Same thing for Medicaid reimbursement. We actually have a budget of $25,000 for that, comparing 28D, 28D, we did fairly well last year, and that actually, um, Lori, I don't know where, with assistance, that was the one that actually made a shot, I mean, revenue that helps. The last piece is interesting. We don't budget, we don't plan that we're going to have any interest revenue. We know we're going to have some, but we don't really just plan on it that way. There is a little bit of protection that kicks something comes up, um, so that came out well. On the expenditure side, you can see, we had a budget of 35, 742, 743. We actually spent about $60,000 in order than that projection. Now, as we're going through the year, I know where our revenue is coming, so I know that, well, okay, we spent that extra $60,000, and that extra $60,000, you'll see some of the things that drove that over the budget. But when you end up with 325, and you spend 60 more, you're still on the positive side, and that's the end thing that we're going to give for our budget. And that sheet, I've kind of picked out four areas that went over budget, four areas that went under budget, just so you can get a reference of the kind of things that we deal with. Charter tuition has always been part of our revenue. It's a negative number that we put in as net charter revenue, on base on what we pay the kids for charter schools compared to what they reimburse us. And then, it's something we find out in late June of the year after it's all done. Oh gee, you know, you actually have high expenses in the form of, before we end up with something like that, that's one of the contingencies that we have to plan for. It was also a spend assessment that showed up on our cherry sheets long after we put our budget together. It originally started out, I believe, at around $2,600. The kind of cherry sheet came out of FY 17, it was $17,000, $18,000. So again, that's something, this year, that number is around $18,000 or $19,000 again, but we knew it way back from the beginning. The other big drivers in our budget are, uh, district tuition, consultants for special ed, both of those things that you can see, combined, about $320,000 in expected expenses. Again, that happens when kids get sent out mid-year or late year, or we have other issues we have to deal with internally. That's part of my job is to monitor all the stuff that goes through here. On the flip side, you can see that we fare well health insurance, that's resulted in people who are switching from HMOs to PPOs, switching to their spouse's plan, different variations that change during the course of the year. Unemployment insurance, we had fair and low expenses last year, um, that we originally had, what we thought potentially could have been for people that were in the name of unemployment, so we had a budget for that. Obviously, we had great turn of snow, um, and you can see that helps quite a bit. And then the summer spend program, that is salaries for teachers that work overtime with our students that are on IEPs that come into the district. We usually budget around $10,000 for that. If we ever got money left over from one of our entitlement grants, we usually offset some of that cost, and that's where that savings came in right there. So they kind of balance each other out, you know, you know, all in all, I think we've mentioned earlier, so. In the end, total revenue actual, total expenditures actual, and you see, we came up with about $19,000 left. Today, that number is about $17,000. That's what I said, there was a slight change during the course of today. That's just some bill that got processed and, so, yeah, we'll get to that. So, the big question as always is E and D, so what I like to refer to, we call the E and D, is made a comp down, which is basically what we actually have in our book, so that can our budget be able to discuss in the meeting, or that 1.5 million is what we have left over as of FY 16. Projecting us to be about the same 1.5 million in FY 17, but we did appropriate 400,000 out of the E and D to go toward the FY 18 budget. So I anticipate E and D to be certified around 1 billion to 1.1. The caveat to that is, it was happened last year for the first time. There are certain bills, health insurance is one of them, that we have to pay in June or July, March, July, July 1st, July 3rd. Pay it in June, we then move the expenses to July, and we set up in July. For reasons I don't get, the states said, we paid it in June, so we're going to take it out of your E and D. Okay. It doesn't matter to me because I know the money's there. So that was, they hit us last year with about $230,000 on the side of this, and they hit us here on this year with the same. So that means E and D may be at the 800,000, which is supposed to be. I don't think it's a big deal because it's, this, this is made a comp down, which is a natural accounting process, and that's what happens. E and D actually is a state thing, that there is no comp, since it, you know, of course, it says E and D matters. It doesn't exist, I guess, of course. So, I think we're in good shape. All the way around, I think we're in really good shape for how we finish up, I mean, financially, we're nice and stable. And then we've got reserve money for emergencies. We've got a very tight budget coming up this year, and I won't say that every year, but that's my mind, so. I sound like a politician. It's a really tight year. I mean, when has it never been not a tight year? Well, we've had some challenges over the course of the summer. I can tell you that this morning, I remember the numbers you were pointing at organic, so that's $34,000 to our budget today. Last, in the last three weeks, we had a couple of lottery history placements that we finally got across in the floor. So we have some drivers that have pushed the budget in a direction we don't want to push it, uh, so we, we make it tighter and tighter and tighter. So we will have, we will have challenges here, but I still think we're going to be fairly stable. And usually, we can stay though, because we have reserves that attack us in case there's impressions. I do have the other 40 slots, I mean, I'm assuming that probably will be ours. I don't like kidding, I would never do 40, that's Dr. Bruce's check.
Mine today is only like 13.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Jay.
Yeah.
All right. Next item is the subcommittee updates, negotiations committee.
Just an update in executive committee with regard to the status of negotiations with all the five, uh, associations.
And superintendent's evaluations committee.
So we need to set our next meeting.
Yes. I sound like the kid asking for homework, uh, but...
Me too. Do you want to try to do it right now or do it afterwards?
That would be wonderful. And I have, as I actually just pulled up, the, with the reorganization, that committee is you, Diane, you, Lee, and Shaw.
Anyone have any suggestions? All right. Are we looking next week?
If it was in the later part of next week, that would be fine. Something like the 31st.
Um, I think I can do the 31st.
Yep.
I can do the 31st. And it's me and... So let's, how do we, what do we think in timeframe, I mean, what's your schedule line?
Available after 4:00.
How about if we do 5?
5 would be perfect.
Just to be on the same side.
So there's a youth meeting that night. It's great. It'd be great.
That's 31st.
31st. And that'll be my comments, right? What I'll do is I'll get the agenda off, post it, okay?
Sounds good.
Okay. Next, we move on to old business, the final status update of the district action plans for 2016, 17.
Okay. So as I do every year, um, at the end of the year and then also at the halfway point, just kind of, uh, you have in your packet, the actual action plans from 16, 17, um, with each of the key actions, um, with kind of a status update and then kind of an explanation of why the status is what it is. I won't go through all 10 pages of the document, every single key action, but kind of highlight each of the five goals, what we felt we were successful as far as completing some of these key actions towards a successful attainment goal. And then, uh, based upon our reflection and then planning at, uh, our leadership team retreat, what are some of the actions we plan to move forward with because they haven't been fulfilled. So the first, uh, goal kind of speaks to designing, using, and I think at this point, you know, we've had this goal for three consecutive years, further refining common assessments that we're using at every level. I know Maureen has done a tremendous amount of work with department chairs and with, uh, grade level, uh, leaders and also with, um, the curriculum assistants to use actual form, formal protocols to do exam and student work collaboratively and then to score and calibrate of the results of common assessments, how teachers are using them. This may sound a little crazy, but, uh, in our reading wonders and our Go Math program, the amount of assessments, quizzes, tests, performance-based assessments that they've given our teachers to use is actually overwhelming. Really is. So I think we've done some nice work, uh, between Clough and Memorial to come to consensus at every single grade level as far as which of the common assessments from the NAGS that they're actually using and then, uh, calibrating. We've done a lot of work, those last two bullet points, particularly in conjunction with Dave Quinn, our Director of Technology Integration, to get, um, particularly our elementary teachers using a lot more digital assessment strategies. Something that we look forward to really building, uh, is the use of CSO, which is an online, uh, portfolio system. And I know he presented, I believe it was back in February or March, about the work that's been done to get some Burger King students ready for the online administration of the NAGS. So, again, using online common assessments. We've had some successes there. I think, uh, a piece where, uh, we really, uh, to be very candid, we did very little work this year, is the whole issue of DDMs or District Determined Measures. It's very much in flux as far as, I, I can say honestly, the regulations and the guidance from DESI has changed at least three times. I think last school year, or the 15, 16 school year, we worked really hard to start creating, uh, some type of framework for how we were going to measure low, moderate, and high growth of students and therefore apply it to teacher effectiveness. But I can tell you, this summer, they haven't even asked for anything from us as far as that type of data from our teacher evaluation system. So, um, it, it's up in flux and with the unfortunate passing of the commissioner, who was probably the strongest advocate for this system, I think that's another question mark as well. I think Maureen has had a lot of success, uh, across the board in leading stage two or, uh, the process of tracking, uh, student assessments in, uh, our curriculum mapping program. It hasn't been completed for every course, so that is going to be a priority for 17, 18. And then that last bullet point, I think that's applicable for basically every year. If you're using common assessments, part of the goal is, it's not a static process, it's something that's dynamic, it's something that you're constantly changing and refining, uh, based upon how your students are actually, uh, performing and then how your colleagues ensure that there's consistency, how they're scoring common assessments as well. Second, uh, goal, again, is, is focused around, uh, the actual formal curriculum within the district. And, uh, again, kind of speaks to the work that we've done, uh, with completing stage one, which is around defining the standards and the outcomes and results. In stage two, again, assessment evidence, uh, Maureen has worked with her curriculum team to, uh, actually define action plans with specific outcomes of how, uh, stage two will be completed this year. We've provided, particularly at the middle school and the high school, more, uh, regular opportunities for vertical articulation, uh, teachers who are teaching the same content area in different grades to meet and talk about, uh, entry points, finish points, and as far as the specific contents and skills and how they build from unit to unit and grade to grade. I think we've had a lot of success this past year in providing formal opportunities for teachers to observe, uh, their peers. We've had something known as, uh, the pineapple chart, where, uh, teachers are actually kind of hanging pineapple chart in their room that is kind of like a, a, outside of their door, which is kind of a symbol. Today's the day that I'm, I'm doing a lesson I'm really excited about, so Diane, Tana, come on in and observe me. Here at the high school, I know John has done a lot of work, and also at the elementary schools, where, um, they're doing shadow student day. So it's kind of a different take on seeing a whole host of teachers when you're seeing it through the eyes of kids. So that's some work that we've been really excited about this year, we hope to grow next year. And then the whole piece that, uh, we'll discuss in detail at our second meeting in September is getting a solid assessment of how effective are we in integrating technology using something known as, if you recall, the SAMR model, which is a model that kind of looks to how are you using technology to promote higher-order thinking? What do we have with a presentation of our formal iPad one-to-one learning, uh, program? That'll be a considerable portion of it. As far as ongoing work, uh, as I said, stage two of the curriculum mapping, uh, still needs to be completed for all courses. And then, uh, the final stage, which is known as stage three, where you, uh, for each course, we detail the actual construction and instructional resources, materials and so on, uh, will be commencing this year. Third goal, uh, again, third straight year, is around increasing and improving inclusion opportunities. One of our key, uh, pieces, as far as a key action, was to do an analysis as the district leadership team and present those results, uh, on, after three years, what's the efficacy of inclusion practices? So if you recall from, I believe it was, uh, in our June meeting, June 5th, uh, we gave that presentation as far as looking at different data points and the effect of co-teaching model. I know Maureen and Dennis have put in a lot of effort into increasing the amount of PD for our paraprofessionals this year. And I think we've had a lot of success and positive feedback with regard to that. We've also, uh, developed, uh, at the elementary level, a mentoring program for both regular classroom teachers and special educators that are involved in co-teaching. And that program does involve, uh, in-class coaching and feedback peer-to-peer, which we think is pretty powerful. And, uh, over the course of the spring and the summer, we've developed master schedules that go over the middle school and high school to allow, uh, more opportunities for co-teaching. As far as, uh, area where, um, we need to continue... As far as area where we need to continue to grow is creating more opportunities for co-teachers, both special educators and classroom teachers, to collaborate and to meet, you know, not only grade levels but between the schools, elementary, middle, middle high, and then to provide the same co-teaching mentoring program, both at the middle school and the high school program. And that will be part of our plans for seventeen eighteen. We talked a lot this school year about social emotional learning, or SCL, and that really was our clear focus throughout the year with, you know, folks like Jess Minahan, the author of The Behavior Code, coming in and being one of our keynotes and also really being a driving force behind the Blackstone Valley PD Day that we had back on Election Day where virtually every topic was around SCL. We've also had a lot of success in using both the Metro West Adolescent Health Survey and the Cage Well Insight Survey and other feedback pieces to drive some programming, to improve program. You know, Maureen, along with the District-wide Wellness Committee, putting together things like Wellness Weeks, both at the high school and the middle school. We've taken a look at what the kids and what the parents, what parents are saying as far as some of our needs. Something that we will be rolling out at the beginning of the school year is a revised D cap for the district curriculum accommodation plan. I'm sure Maureen and Dennis will be presenting upon that soon, as you did, what was that, two years, three years ago?
I had to revise that every year.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's the best thing I've seen until I've completed it, how three years ago, it changes us, or all the adults, it isn't the same. We just have to adapt.
And if you recall, D cap kind of speaks to what all teachers should be doing as far as best practices to, before a student gets into tier two or tier three and needs specific intervention. I think we've also improved some of our programming in being sensitive to those key transitions of grade four to grade five and then also grade eight to grade nine. I think of programming like the NIPAC showcase, what we do here in the evening for parents and their kids. I think about some of the upgrades that we've made with regard to having the fourth graders come up to Misco Hill, also parent informational night for the parents of our fourth graders. I think, you know, it's something that is constantly evolving, but I do think the efforts that we made in all four schools are worthwhile. We also made an effort to have more parent programming focusing on various SCL strands. I think about, at the elementary level, Keys to Clough, What's the Buzz About Memorial? I know Ann Meyer made SCL a focus in the parent coffees that she did with her parents. And then also, I think about our recently revived CPAC that started up again during the second semester. And, you know, we have some key speakers speaking on topics such as anxiety and so on, based upon feedback that we got from parents. And then last but not least, just last Friday, I believe, we've got the outstanding news that Benton Upton has been selected by the Department of Ed to be an EXCEL district, EXCEL being an acronym standing for Excellence in Social Emotional Learning. So we're going to be an initial part of an initial consortium of now nine districts across the state that'll be able to access resources, speakers, workshops, but also share some of our best practices on social emotional learning. So hats off to Mo, who was the brainchild behind that grant. As far as key actions that are still in progress, and we'll continue our work to really stand out, I think within the last year or two, we've created more partnerships, but I think we need, the feedback that I consistently get from our principals, is we need to craft more partnerships with things like mental health agencies that provide those wraparound services for our kids and their families. I mean, part of it is our geographic location, but I think in looking throughout the valley and the greater middle fruit area, we really need to do that. I think the second piece, and this really was a bit of an epiphany for our leadership team, not this past year, but in the summer of sixteen, in thinking about the social thinking curriculum. I think if you go into Clough or Memorial, you know, I know Deb Swain at one meeting talked about the work that they were doing with regard to zones and regulation, that if you go through Clough or Memorial, you literally see posters on the wall that, you know, walk kids through, take a deep breath, thinking about your actions and so on. And that's really, you know, obviously developmentally appropriate for elementary school kids. And we think about a lot of the traditional structures, things like lunch punches and so on, but the question is, what are we doing for middle school kids and what are we doing for the high school kids? And I think far too often, there's an assumption that, oh, well, they're socially mature and they know how to self-regulate and so on, next phase, Lee. So I think just one of those things, because we had a lot of, we had a very ambitious focal area around SCL, but really assessing what we're doing at every level and making changes and particularly addressing, and I think really with a focus particularly around middle school and high school and what we're doing to reach all kids. And then last but not least, and something that'll be, as I consider to be a perpetual goal, would be improving district communications and highlighting and celebrating our successes. We did upgrade the district and school websites right at the beginning of last school year. We did transition to Blackboard Connect and updated mass email and calling system. Dave Quinn was very instrumental in the next two bullet points in getting our teachers' appropriate activity chain and all of the Google apps for education, the whole Google suite of tools, but also adopting Google Classroom as more consistent learning management system. And then thinking about, and we highlighted them at the school committee level, but highlighting the successes of our students, the successes of our staff, and what we're doing with our students through things like social media and the Twenty-First Century Learning Conference, which happens here at NIPAC twice per year. Last year was the third annual Community Eye Fair, and as I said before, events like What's the Buzz at Memorial and Keys to Clough and so on, highlighting the good news of our districts. As far as ongoing pieces, I think we need to, we still have work to do around the Blackboard Connect email system to ensure that there's more consistent use. I think we need to do a deeper dive into training. Joe Lakey, our Technology Operations Director, has said, well, Joe, I could just turn off the old system and force people into the new system, the new login. Yes, you can do that, but right now, unfortunately, at least two of our schools were not maximizing all of the bells and whistles in the system. So we need to do more work with that. I think a piece that you will see in the seventeen eighteen plans is, yes, there is something district to family and school to family, but let's start to delve deeper into what is effective classroom to home communication reflect? What are specific exemplars and how do we ensure greater consistency so that if my teacher, if my student has Mrs. Duncan or Mrs. Django, there isn't a gap as far as quality and quality of communication? And then the last bullet point, which is the bane of my existence, I do want to publish and disseminate the district performance report. I know in a very excuse-laden way, you see the explanation of, well, a lot of that statistics do show up in our budget before. But I think it comes down to carving out the time and probably from a resource perspective, there's no reason why we can't produce that and just have a strictly online version and push that out electronically to all of our families. So those are the five primary goals, and that is kind of in a nutshell, our progress as far as our key actions and what was adopted by the school committee last September. Any questions on that?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We have his new business trip to San Sebastian, Spain.
Back in April, Katie Cardamone, who is our SI coordinator, presented the proposition of going forward with a formal student exchange program with Santa Teresa, which is a K through twelve school in San Sebastian, Spain. She has, in the interim, been in constant contact with her counterpart at the school. And September is actually the slowest time of the school year for the school. So plans have been made to travel from September ninth to the fourteenth on what we're kind of referring to as a reconnaissance trip to check out the school, check out the city, check out the settings. The group that would be traveling would be myself, Mary Ann Moran, Julie Jasomi, who is a Spanish teacher, who will be the kind of liaison, and Katie Cardamone. And we went through a process and selected two junior SI students, Katie Nadolsky and Abby Murphy, to be part of this trip. So in the course of the trip, Katie and Abby will actually be staying with students' families in San Sebastian. It is pretty much a jam-packed trip, it's pretty short in duration, but we have planned Monday, September eleventh, will be an actual reception in City Hall for us. They're very much into the whole ceremony thing. And then the evening of September twelve is a formal presentation that will be given at the school to Santa Teresa parents and students, basically selling Benton Upton, selling in two-way exchange, selling Massachusetts, selling our region. To kind of give you a small snapshot of this, this is a website which we built this summer that actually kind of speaks to, that technically says MURSD Exchange Project. We are Escuelas Regionales de Benton y Upton. Quienes somos? Who we are, our region? Isn't that a pretty picture of Benton, our towns, and our school? And then more information about the exchange, about the Benton Upton SI program, the actual presentation that will be given that Tuesday evening, and then contact information. So it is, I think, very, very exciting. I think, as we said before, this is an exciting opportunity. I think it represents a real opportunity to move the Spanish immersion program to a new and different level. Very much looking forward to it, and I think it's going to be a great opportunity for our kids.
Great. Does anybody have any questions? Any discussion? Sounds wonderful. I'm sure you'll report back on all the great findings.
Estoy practicando mi español para el viaje. By policy, it means approval from the school.
So make a motion to approve the recon trip to San Sebastian, Spain?
Certainly.
As discussed. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing no call for discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have correspondence. Is there any correspondence?
There is no correspondence this evening.
Right. Are there other matters not anticipated by this committee within forty-eight hours but posted? Okay, hearing no. Future agenda items include the approval of the two thousand seventeen eighteen Mersey District Action Plan on September eleventh and the one-to-one learning evaluation presentation on September twenty-fifth. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn to a roll call for executive session.
I make a motion to adjourn to a roll call to executive session.
Okay. The committee will not return to open session, so...
Phil, the center, aye.
You are a aye.
Diane, duck and aye.
Tana, jango, aye.
Here now. Meeting's got adjourned.
Yeah.